Good evening. I'd like to call to order the council meeting of November 13th. If the clerk could please call the roll.
Certainly, Councilmember Brown.
President.
Councilmember Garza.
Here.
Councilmember Hussein.
Here.
Councilmember Jackson.
President.
Councilmember Cost.
Here.
Councilmember Spatifor.
President.
Councilmember Spitzley.
Here.
Councilmember Wood.
Here.
There are eight members present at quorum, and we are to the meditation and pledge of allegiance.
All right. Do we have anyone that someone would like us to remember at this time? Seeing none, if we could... Councilmember Spitzley.
Thank you, Madam President. I know that it's past, but it is, you know, over the weekend was Veterans Day. And I know that the City of Lansing is a great supporter of our veterans. And so I did not want to pass by the opportunity to say Happy Belated Veterans Day. I spent Veterans Day with my dad, may he rest in peace, in Pensacola, Florida. But to the folks that have served our nation, I wanted to say thank you. And it's a debt that we cannot pay, but Happy Belated Veterans Day. Thank you.
Mayor Shor.
I apologize I walked in late. We're now...
That's okay.
We're discussing folks we want to keep in memory.
Yes.
If we could all keep in memory the Dunning's family, Stephen Dunning's unexpectedly passed away. So brother of Shawna, Judge Shawna Dunning's, and I hope we will keep their family in our prayers. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Is there anyone else? Seeing none, if we could please rise. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You have for your approval the council proceedings of October 30th, 2023.
Vice President Garza.
Thank you, Council President. I move the minutes of the October 30th meeting as written.
We have a motion on the minutes. Are there any questions? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose. Passes unanimously.
We are to the consideration of late items.
Vice President Garza.
Thank you, Council President. So suspension of council rule number nine is needed to allow consideration of late items. Late items will be considered as part of the regular portion of the meeting to which they relate. And with that, I would move the late item, the sole source resolution brought for us by Councilwoman Wood.
All right, we have that before us. This is to suspend the rules. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose.
Aye.
Passes. With that, we are to special ceremonies.
We have a tribute and recognition of elderly instruments being named America's Top Small Business for 2023 by the U.S. Chamber of Commerce.
And if you could please come forward. I thought we were going to have somebody here. Do we have somebody here from elderly?
Elderly Instruments.
Carol.
Yeah. Patricia. I am.[246.61][246.61](Laughter).
Ooh. So do I just read the resolution then?
Yep, just go ahead.
Okay, so now there before resolved that the City of Lansing, City Council hereby congratulates elderly instruments on their award and thank them for their support and impact in the greater Lansing community. So I just would like to say that elderly instruments has been a staple in our community for over 50 years. My father, my brother is taking lessons there. I think I've got to, what is that, smoke on the water, and that's about as far as I made it. So I appreciate you guys being in our community. You've really done a lot for my family, not only the families around, and we congratulate you. And that was the recipient of over 15,000 small businesses. They received that award. So with that, I'd move the resolution.
We have a motion on the resolution. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose. Passes unanimously. Thank you.
Okay, next we have a presentation on Act 4, 2023 Sale of City Property Parking Lot Number 1 on 425 South Grand Avenue.
Councilmember Spitzley.
Thank you, Madam President. And I think we have somebody who's representing Boji out in the... Could you please come down to the well and state your name for the record? Are you alone? Okay, please have a seat.
Good evening, everyone. My name is John Hindu. I'm the president of the Boji Group.
Oh, somebody's coming down with you? And you are, sir?
Hal King, City Parking Manager.
Have a seat. That's right, we have some questions for you. That's right. So what we have before us is a, and we're going to have a public hearing on it tonight. It's an Act 4-2023 Sale of City Property. It's the parking lot number one on 425 South Grand Avenue. This, the sale is to be sold to the Boji Group for $940,000. It is owned by the City of Lansing, excuse me, owned by the City of Lansing, 115 parking spaces. According to our parking office, since COVID, it has not been very productive. It is anticipated that the Boji Group will be purchasing the property and building housing. So I don't know who would you like to go first, Madam President?
We'll let the developers speak first on this, and then...
Then we have questions for...
We'll have questions for our parking division.
So welcome.
Thank you.
Bring the mic closer to you so we can hear you. Thank you.
Thank you. So we have executed a purchase agreement that we've submitted with the city to acquire this parking lot from the city. Boji Group is heavily invested in the City of Lansing, but particularly that particular block. I'm not sure if the council members know or not, but we also own the adjacent property, which is the former Davenport University. And our company currently has under contract the small retail center on the corner that's owned by the Barry Anas family. We're very interested in redeveloping that entire block, predominantly with housing and working in conjunction with the Lansing Housing Authority.
And that's your presentation?
That is. I'm happy to answer any questions that you have.
Then if we could have some information from the parking division?
And if I may, Madam President, I know that Sherri had sent you some specific questions.
Yes.
Okay, and you're prepared to respond to those questions this evening?
And then if you again could give your name for the record.
Hal King, I'm the City Parking Manager. One of the items, I just wanted to clarify, I believe the purchase price is $760,000.
And you are correct. I apologize for that. It was purchased by the City of Lansing in 2008 for $940,000. I apologize for that. Thank you.
Just to respond to some of the questions that had been asked, there was a request for any studies or reports. Unfortunately, we do not have any reports from the previous manager that was there. And even if we did, I believe most of those assumptions would probably be out of date, given the pandemic and the operations that had left there. The Michigan State Police were housed right next door to the parking lot itself, and Lansing State Journal has moved their offices out from the diagonal location that they had. We did verify that the city does own the lot. The city is the owner. Parking Services, which is my department, is the responsive organization for that. So how much did the city spend on demolition? Believe that was $65,520. And then the cost to repave the lot and the annual maintenance since then? Annual maintenance is a little off because we've deferred a lot of it there. I mean, there's really nothing happening. Basically, if you look back from fiscal 19, we had oversold that parking lot. As a matter of fact, we had a two-year waiting list for people to get into that lot. By the time we got to fiscal 20, we were down 20%. By the time we got to 21, we were down to almost 17% of occupancy. We now, out of 115 car lot, have six permits sold. So this is not something that we can really hold on to and say we're going to do something with it. It was originally considered for parking while there were other construction operations going on. Most of that unfortunately has not come to pass. So and then verification that the sale funds would go back to the parking fund, as far as we know that will happen, but unfortunately, something like that, I think, would have to go to the finance That's all I have as far as the questions were concerned. If there's anything else I can bring to your fore.
I didn't believe that you gave us the cost for paving.
The entire past purchase order at the time that the Boarshead Theater was taken down, Boarshead Theater was a, was a, the demolition for that was $65,520. And then for repaving the lot and any other work since then, it was $327,895.15.
All right, thank you. I have got, excuse me, Councilmember Hussein and then Councilmember
No, that was actually my question. But, you know, just, I'm looking at the numbers in front of me. So we buy this for $940,000 in 2008, spend $65 to demo, another $327,000 in capital investment in terms of asphalt and the like, and then, you know, some unknown amount in terms of annual maintenance. And we're looking at selling it for $768. That's...
Any, anything else? Or is that...
No.
Okay. I've got Councilmember Cost and Vice President Garza. Okay, thank you. Vice President Garza.
Thank you, Council President. I just want some clarity here. You know, I seen the numbers that was sent in the email, the $65,000 for the parking lot design, $104, maybe $103,000 for the work, and then another $327,895. On top of the $940,000, I'm getting over like $1.4 million of what the city has involved with the different work that we've done over the years, and we are looking to sell it for about half that cost. I'm just making sure that that's, I'm doing the math right.
I was not involved with the original purchase. Matter of fact, the original purchase was done with an appraisal report that showed the original value on the property to be $785,000. So I'm not sure why the city bought it for $940,000.
That was in 2008?
Yes.
So you're saying back in 2008, that's what the appraisal was, and we were able to buy it for more?
Yes. We spent $940,000 buying it, and it was $785,000 on the appraisal.
So when was the last appraisal done?
The most recent appraisal was done just a few months ago.
And who did the appraisal?
That was Bellbridge.
Bellbridge. And how much was that for?
That's the $760,000.
Thank you.
Are there, Councilmember Brown, then Councilmember Cost?
Thank you. I think we spoke about this a little bit in committee. The $760,000 appraisal, did it include the repaving or just the land, or what actually was appraised?
No, the $760,000 is just the appraisal for the property itself. There's no other construction costs or anything else going into that. Boji is going to buy the property for the 760, and then from there on in make whatever changes they need.
So for example, to let me clarify, if we initially had an appraisal for 700 and whatever it was in 2008, we purchased it for $940,000. We put $300,000 into paving it as a parking lot with earning potential. So then it would be, we've put in 1.4 million. Is any of those considerations into the current appraisal when you're saying the property, does it include when there's a parking lot on the property? Does that, are you including that we put $300,000 into the actual property?
Not really, no. I mean, the cost itself is, I would think, just, you know, what it would take in order to make this go from a theater and that type of property. There was access control systems put in there, paving, striping, this type of thing. This was not built as a parking lot, and so the changes that had to be made in there. And I don't know what else was in there, if there was any remediation for hydraulic tanks or fuel tanks or anything else like that. I didn't see, I didn't see the original purchase order. I wasn't involved with this in any way, shape, or form before I first got here a few months back and was asked to start looking into, start looking into this. But the $360,000 approximately that was paid for the, for the replacement of, you know, destruction of the building and replace it with a parking lot, I'm not sure what exactly went in on that, other than the, I know that there was, like I said, parking access control systems that are put in there. There's still, actually, the gates are still standing there right now.
Okay. Did that answer your question?
That gave me the information. I guess my question is, why are we not trying to recruit, you know, the investment that we've made, you know, to sell this, instead of just, what you're saying is, we used to have so many permits, and we were creating revenue. So if it is a parking lot, and it needs to be a parking lot, why are we not just leasing it and creating revenue versus selling it for less than what we paid for?
Well, I mean, the number of permits that we're selling right now is a very small amount.
Correct.
We're looking at, we're looking at less than $6,000 a year.
Correct. So it went from $100,000 to $6,000. So for example, if there's, let's say, three groups that are doing 1,000 housing, or whatever it may be, or businesses, and they now need to access that parking lot, then those permits would change back to the higher volumes that you were producing in the past. Is that correct?
That could be correct, but looking at the, looking at the numbers over the past five years, it's been, it's been going down significantly. Like I said, we lost, we lost almost 80,000, or not 80,000, 80% of our purchases in permits over the past four years. And it's still going down. It was, I believe, $11,000 for fiscal 22, and we're down to $6,800 for fiscal 23.
So why are we selling the parking lot if there's no need for parking?
Councilmember Brown, I don't believe they're going to have parking there. They're going to build housing.
Oh, so there's no more parking?
Yeah, there would be no more parking.
Thank you. That was my question.
Okay, thank you. I've got Councilmember Cost, and then Councilmember Spitzley.
Thank you, President Wood. So if I did my math right, this one's not for you, Hal. It's for Mr. Boji there. So we've got $940,000 we paid for this piece of property. We were going to sell it to you for $750,000, $760,000. Looks like, what, $65,520 in demo, $327,895 in repaving. So the taxpayers are giving you a discount of $500,573,415. So will we be getting that same discount on the proposed new city hall?
Well, I can't speak to the new city hall, but what I can tell you is, we're offering the appraised value for the property, which is generally how real estate is transacted, whether it's your home or anything else. You get the appraised value, which sets the price, and we've gladly offered the full price of the appraisal, which is $760,000.
Well, that's a bargain I wish I could get for the folks in the first ward. Thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Spitzley.
Thank you, Madam President. How long have we had this as a parking lot?
I believe it was 2008 when it was purchased.
Okay, and approximately how much in revenue have we gotten before the, I'm talking before the pandemic, every year?
Without, you know, without having all the numbers in front of me, I couldn't tell you, but I know we're at about $137,000 for the last fiscal year prior to the pandemic.
Okay, thank you.
And like I said, we were operating with a two-year waiting list, so that would have probably stayed the same.
Thank you. So one of the things I think that we had talked about, and then it come up during budget time, was a review of our surface lots, looking at them and making recommendations on which ones that are not being fully utilized, and then put those up for sale. Is this one of those lots?
This is definitely one of those. We have, we have probably three lots right now that I'm aware of. And we do have, our parking study is supposed to be finished. As a matter of fact, I was, I was hoping to have it as part of my email today, but I got the executive summary, but I didn't get the full study yet. But we've asked the consultant, Walker Consultants, to give us a listing of what properties we should maintain and what properties we should divest.
And sir, I apologize. Could you tell me your name again?
John Hindu.
John Hindu. And what exactly do you do for the Boji Group again? I'm sorry.
I'm president of the company.
All right, thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you for your information.
Are there any other questions? Councilmember Hussein.
Yeah, I think one of the things we need to look at, even beyond just, you know, when you talk about the potential of, I think where we've kind of landed is that a lot of us believe that this is not, $768,000, when you consider purchase price, when you consider the amount of money that we put into it, that it's not reasonable to be looking to offload this to $768. But one of the things, though, I mean, these are assets. These are valuable to the City of Lansing. And one of the things we need to be talking about is what are we getting, right, in return? So not just the $768, but in terms of the value of the project. I am not somebody that believes that we should just be offloading things. First, you know, first group that engages, you know, we see a 768K number, that sounds good. What is, what's the project? Could you talk a little bit, I mean, we had one council member that didn't even know that it was housing. What's the project? Your partnership, you said Lansing Housing Authority. I know you're, I assume you're talking about the Lansing Housing Commission.
Yes.
What does that partnership look like? Could you talk a little bit about that?
Absolutely. We're working in conjunction with them on two pieces of property. The property that we're talking about tonight and the property directly adjacent, which is a former Davenport site, which we own. What's being proposed in our partnership is the development of, in excess of 100 housing units, affordable housing units on that site, on those two sites combined, I should say.
Now, and I would agree, sir, that, you know, we need a variety of housing options in the City of Lansing. One of those is affordable, right, workforce housing. How did you choose Lansing Housing Commission as your partner?
Through our various relationships in the City of Lansing and talking to people and getting with the Lansing Housing Commission, we determined that there was a need. They determined, they advised us that they were looking to do certain projects focusing on housing. Initially, they thought that our site was a great site. We tended to agree with them. Our site being the Davenport site, we've owned it for many, many years, and it just made a lot of sense. And through a lot of discussions, as most transactions, things evolved, and we've come up with this, with this thought that affordable housing really makes sense on these two pieces of property. And the Lansing Housing Commission, which obviously are very well versed on this, believe that this is a great site for that.
Hmm, okay. Have you visited any of their, they call them asset management properties, any of their properties in the City of Lansing?
I have not.
You have not. So you're, okay, I struggle with that. So we're talking about a partnership. We're talking about onboarding scores of units, and you have not visited some of the properties that they actually own and manage at this time.
I have not.
I'm there often. And I'm going to piss off a lot of people when I say this, but I'm not going to be real supportive of anything that comes before this committee or this body. And we're talking about expanding capacity or expanding keys, doors, units, and the like. We are, we, those of us up here that are actually involved in the neighborhoods, we live at these properties sometimes, right, because they are so, so mismanaged. And it's incredibly unfortunate. And we, you know, we had a pilot last year that came before this body, and I thought it was a really, really bad idea to support that pilot at the time, because they were also partnered in that. That went through. Time will tell, right, if I was right or wrong. I'm right. And, but there's just, I mean, there's zero way. There's zero way that I'm going to support anything that Lansing Housing Commission is involved in. And the fact that you haven't been in any of those properties, that's troubling. Thank you.
Okay. Was that a hand? Vice President Garza.
All right, thank you, Council President. So I guess one comment. With your, with your partnership with Lansing Housing Commission, my understanding is they just offloaded 240-something scatter site housing, but now they want to take on more? Is that my understanding?
Yes, they'd like to build on our site and this site as well with us, provided that we move forward with the transaction.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, just a couple things before we move on into our agenda. One, I wanted to give an explanation to the $940,000 sale price of the Boarshead. At that time, the Boarshead was in debt when we had decided as a council to purchase that property. It was purchased at the price that they needed to be able to commence and make sure that they're, that when they left, they left with no debt. So that was the decision for the $940,000. Not that it shouldn't be considered. When you look at, it's still taxpayer dollars, but that was the reason. Second, my second question would be, or statement would be, I'm assuming that based on what you just alluded to, we're talking about that the potential of you coming to us for a pilot. Is that correct? No, it's you.
Oh, I'm sorry. I believe the Lansing Housing Commission would be coming to make a request.
For a pilot. Okay, so...
I don't, I don't know if they're, I, they're not coming to make a request for a payment in lieu of taxes, but there is a, there is a tax, there's a tax credit that is available that they may be coming to request.
If they have to come to council, they're coming for a pilot. So that's, if it's 10%, then it's done through MISHDA, and they don't have to come to us. So we are not having, yeah, so we currently don't have taxes coming from this, and then we have the potential of the pilot.
It's not a pilot. It is a low-income housing tax credit is what they're applying for.
So they're going for workforce?
That is my understanding.
Okay, that's different than, than what I heard you say before. So workforce is something different.
Correct. My apologies if I misspoke. They are applying for a low-income housing tax credit. They're not coming before the council for a pilot, as far as I'm aware.
All right, council, or, Mr. City Attorney.
This is not, this is only a public hearing today, and under the ordinances charter, you can't, City Council can't approve this until the next meeting.
Correct.
For seven days. So the question that I will get is, is the city the owner of this property? And I know that we've seen deeds going back to 2008, but that's not going to be sufficient. So you already, Mr., Boji Development may already have a title commitment or a title search. But in any event, we've got to see a title search or a title commitment showing ownership in the City of Lansing. Pretty standard business.
I would hope in the future we have those things done before we're asked to have a public hearing or under consideration. So, okay, we want to thank you for, gentlemen, for being down here this evening, and that leads us into...
Referral, oh, nope, sorry. We have two comments by council members and the city clerk.
Are there any council member comments? Councilmember Hussein.
Yeah, first of all, I want to thank folks that came out to President Wood's constituent contact meeting this past Saturday. No, in all seriousness, I wanted to thank President Wood for, in my absence, conducting that meeting. I wanted to thank Ben Schuldner with the Lansing School District for being in attendance and providing some updates on issues related to the schools, particularly those that are in South Lansing. I wanted to thank Mr. Scott O'Barry from Lansing Recycling Center, who was there to talk about the potential of purchase along South MLK and the repurposing of a potential, or a structure, if you will. But I also wanted to thank Councilman Cost, who, in my absence, went out and picked up refreshments. Mr. Wilks, Jason Wilks, who did the same, I hear. So there were a lot of donuts on hand, which is fantastic. We will not meet in December. Historically, we've recessed both in December and in the middle of the summer, so July, but we will be back at it January 13th, 10:00 a.m. at 5825 Wise Road, sorry. Real quick, a couple neighborhood meeting updates. There has been a date change for the Southwest Action Group. Typically, we meet the first Tuesday of the month, but due to the election, we actually are meeting tomorrow. Again, this is the Southwest Action Group. This will be at 6:00 p.m. at 2101 West Homes. If you don't recognize the address, that is the South Side Community Coalition Center. The Colonial Village Neighborhood Association with boundaries of Mount Hope to the north, you have Pleasant Grove to the west, you have West Homes to the south, and you have South MLK. You have Pleasant Grove to the west. You have West Holmes to the south, and you have South MLK to the east. They will be meeting this Wednesday, 7:00 p.m. at Grace United Methodist Church at 1900 Boston Boulevard. They are really working hard, I think, to grow membership, to get folks involved. They are a highly, highly organized neighborhood organization. They actually have three districts. They have district representatives. But that also means that they need a lot of participation from their residents. And so if you live within the boundaries, the aforementioned boundaries, I hope you consider attending. The Luton Rich Neighborhood Association meeting will be meeting, I'm sorry, group will be meeting this Thursday, 7:00 p.m. at Mayflower Congregational Church. If you're unaware, Deerfield is the boundary to the west. Mount Hope is the boundary to the north, Pleasant Grove to the east, and then Victor to the south. And then lastly, the Churchill Downs Community Association will be meeting next Tuesday, 6:30 p.m. at Del Frieder Schmidt South Side Community Center at 5825 Wise Road. They've actually had to move the location of their neighborhood meetings because they have, I've been all over the city to neighborhood meetings. They might have the largest turnouts I've seen. It's incredible. And then with regard to another SWAG event, I did want to announce that Holiday in the Square for the Southwest Action Group, this is the fourth iteration of Holiday in the Square. This will be Friday, December 1st at 6:00 p.m. This is at 3434 Pleasant Grove. This is the southwest corner of Pleasant Grove and Holmes. Again, hosted by SWAG, there will be a tree lighting ceremony, pictures with Santa, hot cocoa, caroling, and more. And so I highly encourage folks to get out there on, again, that is Friday, December 1st at 6:00 p.m. Thank you.
Thank you. I have Councilmember Jackson, then Councilmember Cost.
Thank you. Just want to invite everyone to our Fourth Ward Constituent Contact Meeting every fourth Saturday of the month. This November, the 25th, it'll be 10 o'clock at Gregory's. That's 2510 North MLK. Look forward to meeting you and talking about anything City of Lansing and Fourth Ward related.
Thank you. Councilmember Cost.
Thank you, President Wood. I just wanted to say thank you to Councilmember Hussein for allowing me to be a part of this constituent meeting. Your folks want good orange juice. I brought good orange juice. They may not want you back. Also, I have made a decision to move our contact meeting for the First Ward. We will no longer be using the Board of Water and Light, Rio Town Depot. We are going to move it back home to the Allen Neighborhood Center. That's 1611 East Kalamazoo Street. Now, we'll have one more meeting before, one more city council meeting before my constituent contact meeting, our constituent contact meeting. But I just wanted to start throwing the address out there. And it's going to still be at the normal time, 10:00 a.m. for Saturday of the month. So I will mention that again in two weeks. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice President Garza.
Thank you, Councilwoman President. I just wanted to give an update specifically to Loretta and anybody else that's been paying attention. Back in, I believe, 2018, I found the North Cemetery Archway. And we've been working on that at the Plumbers and Pipe Fitters Training Facility. They were graciously, the Plumbers and Pipe Fitters were graciously enough to pay for all the new material for it. It was all put together, and then COVID hit. It was put on the shelf for a while and got back to work on it this last year. And we just picked it up today from the powder coating company. And so we're going to assemble it all together, put the new words on it, and then hopefully, still this fall, we'll be able to erect it. Otherwise, we'll be doing it first thing in the spring.
Thank you.
So we should be able to reuse the foundation. I went out to the site and looked at it. May just have to cut off the old bolts and put some new anchors in, but it looks pretty, pretty solid, so. Thank you.
Other council member comments at this time? The only thing I'd like to remind people of is that on November 27th will be Councilmember Spitzley's last meeting. So she will not be able to be here for the December meeting. And just wanted everyone to know that if you'd like to come and greet with her and have a few comments, her last meeting will be November 27th. Also wanted to reach out. We have an organization that's called No Senior Without Christmas. Tracy Reese has been doing this as a board member for a number of years. And their hopes are to ensure that 400 elderly residents in Clinton Eaton in Ingham County, with the majority of them are Ingham County, that are 60 and older, in poverty, with limited family support, receive essential care packages. They are below their donations that they need. They're trying to increase that. If you'd like to make a donation to this organization, just go to their website, which is nosenierwithoutchristmas.org. And you can donate right there online. So I would encourage you to do that. They do a great deal for the community. So we appreciate that. Did you have a comment? Councilmember Cost.
Thank you, President Wood. I'm sorry, I forgot. One last thing. So I was at the Marine Corps birthday party on Friday at the VFW 701. And there were several of the coordinators that do the Toys with Tots program. They do not have toys this year. They are very, very low. So if you were able to donate toys, there's donation bins all around the city, outside of the city, I believe, as well, in the tri-county area. They typically do that, my, my family has always donated their time to this. They typically do it on South Pennsylvania at their distribution center. And I believe that is going to be the second week in December that they're doing that. So they are still looking for toys or assistance to be able to buy toys. So if you can help, please reach out to those folks. They do a great service for a lot of folks that can't afford things for their family for Christmas. Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Clerk.
Thank you, Madam President. Want to take a couple of moments and just thank everyone who was involved in our election that we had last week. Whether you were a voter who voted by mail, came to your Election Day precinct, or participated in our brand-new early voting that we had in Michigan for the first time in this election. I appreciate your participation. I also especially want to thank my staff and the election inspectors who worked so hard to make this election reality and come across, come across very smoothly without a hitch. So thank you all who participated in any way. And we are moving forward onto the next election. Looks like we will have four elections next year. Not what I wanted, but it's all good. I also want to start mentioning to folks that this was our last election where we will be operating out of the South Washington Election Unit. So we will be moving to Rio School, 1221 Rio Roads. So we get to go back to elementary school and learn how to vote again. And we will, we will make sure that that is plastered on every piece of material that we can get. And we will put a new drop box in there. But I believe through the March election, at least, the, we are going to be able to keep the one at South Washington. But we'll plaster some billboards there reminding folks that it's the last time for that location. I do want to just announce for anyone who's listening who heard the conversation about the Charter Commission earlier. The, as we said, the election will be May 7th. The filing deadline will be January 23rd. That's a Tuesday at 4:00 p.m. is the filing deadline. And we will have information and materials available on the city clerk's website later this week. So we will have that by the end of the week available. And folks will have all the paperwork finalized, and folks will be able to come in and file. And, and one clarification right at the end. It was asked to clarify the deadline for the Charter Commission. The deadline is based on last Tuesday's election. So it is three years from the date that the Charter, that the proposal passed to have a charter revision. So November of 2027 will be the three-year deadline that the Charter Commission has to complete their work by. And I think that's all the announcements I have. So we are to community event announcements. If anyone in the audience has a community event, we'll give you up to one minute to tell us the details.
Hello. Tomorrow, we're going to be having the Place for Us Coalition Meeting at The Fledge. It will be at 7:00 tomorrow. Our coalition has formed to try and create more safer and more inclusive housing, shelter options for the LGBT community and others who are affected by the discrimination in our current shelter system. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you. Other community events?
May as well be the one to break the news of this annual tradition. On this Friday, around like, I think, 5:00 or 6:00 p.m., the parade for Silver Bells in the City will occur. It's an annual tradition for every Friday prior to Thanksgiving for the, for Silver Bells to occur on a date like that. And in addition to that, next Thursday, I believe, this coming Thanksgiving will be, in the morning, I think, at 9:00 o'clock or so, will be our Turkey Trot, which several parts of the country hold around the same time. So I'll get running for that. So I gotta, it's basically me killing two birds with one stone with two different events. So that's all I need to say.
Thank you. And seeing no one else for community event announcements, we do want to announce that momentarily is the deadline to sign up for public comment on legislative matters or on the show cause hearing. So if you want to address city council, the show cause hearing is item number four. And that is the green sign-in sheet. And then legislative matters are items five through 19. Although I understand item seven will not be considered tonight. So items five through 19 are on the blue sheet. And we'll pick, we'll give last call on that in about 10 seconds. And with that, we are to the mayor's comments.
Mayor Shor.
All right. Thank you, Madam President, Mr. Clerk. I want to congratulate several groups that had incredible events. I want to congratulate the wonderful Veterans Reef Laying and Program on Saturday for our veterans. I thought it went very well. Thank you to the Board of Water and Light for their Veterans Day event, which was packed and went great. I wasn't able to make it, but the Endeavor Health had a fundraiser, and I hope that went well. We had our Neighborhood Resource Summit. I saw Councilman Cost there. I thought there was a great turnout and lots of resources for many of our residents. So thank you to all the vendors and all the residents that were there. We had a wonderful Latino community update in Old Town. And thank you for everyone that was participating as part of that. Congratulations to Sinar, which is incredible business on our, in Rio Town, on their 30th anniversary. The Abrams Planetarium had a great 60th anniversary over in East Lansing. We can give a shout out to them, too, because I know my kids spend a lot of time there. Outside of that, we've got a few events coming up. You already heard. Silver Bells in the City is this Friday. Very excited for the Electric Light Parade. There's going to be a few new entries, new surprises, something about a Cirque du Soleil entry that I'm curious to see. Lots of marching bands. Saturday morning will be the Silver Bells 5K that I will be running very slowly. So feel free to run and run faster than me because it's not going to be pretty. I wanted to welcome, for those who haven't heard, Raleigh Van Fossen, who will be joining the administration as our new economic development and planning director. Nicholas Montre will remain as a deputy director, and I'm excited to see Raleigh and all of his experience come in. I forgot to mention also, we have, our next mobile food pantry is Saturday, November 18th, at 9:00 a.m. at Grace United Methodist Church, which is on 1900 Boston Boulevard. And last but not least, I know this has come up a few times, so for the audience out there, I keep getting asked about City Hall. We don't have a finalized proposal yet. As has been announced, we are looking very closely at the Masonic Temple Building and repurposing that building. It will not cost $40 million to purchase that building. We're expecting massive rehab. But we will have that proposal to the city council probably by January because we don't have the money yet from the state and the numbers aren't figured out yet. So it's our intention is to go over to, to the Masonic Temple Building, the Cooley Building, and repurpose that historic gem. And, but it's not going to cost $40 million to buy it. That's going to be the rehab and the costs and things like that. We're still negotiating all of that. So we hope to have that for you, either by the December meeting or by the January meeting, but more likely the January meeting. That's what I've got. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we are to public comment on show cause hearing. We have one show cause hearing, orders to make, save or demolish to the owners of 3301 Turner Street.
Councilmember Hussein.
Sure. So we actually took this through the process on October 2nd. And we passed a resolution for make, save, or demolish. This is, this was a 30-day, this is a fire damage structure. In any event, we learned that, we had a show cause hearing, subsequent show, show cause hearing, sorry. And we had learned that there were a couple of things that we didn't do. Number one, we, we not only sent out a certified letter regarding the show cause hearing, we also actually posted dwelling. We have no evidence within the code shop that we actually posted the dwelling of the show cause hearing. The second piece is that at some point during the process, our process, ownership changed. And we failed to notify the new ownership of the show cause hearing. So essentially, what we're doing is we're taking it back through the process. We did on October 17th have Mr. Walter Allen in for code compliance. He talked to us a little bit about the property and the fact that nothing had really changed. And there was no reason necessarily to halt the process in his mind. So with that being said, we are moving forward with another show cause hearing.
And we have one speaker, and I apologize for, I'm probably going to butcher this name, Kovak Miliohi. Milueho. And you have three minutes to address the council.
Okay, I'm new owner, and we call inspector on September to tell us what we have to do. And I make the contract with Master Work Wayne. He already had permit to do in that house. And after, after that, we already, I don't know, can you see the picture? We already finished his work. We voluntarily removed complete kitchen and dining room with outside wall and roof. And here, how is now inside? And we already have the permit for the heating. And this is outside, how it looks now. And we already have permit for the furnace and for designing. And I think, I don't know why, but inspector didn't tell somebody else because he approved us to do that. It was inside the house on September. And on this letter, I was, I accidentally find on the, my door. You know, I was so surprised because we didn't do anything illegally. You know, just go in the city, took the permit, start the work, and almost finished the work. And this one was, I never saw this one before. I don't know. Do you want a picture or?
From you when you're done. All right. Thank you very much. So on the referral of the show cause hearing.
That will go back to public safety. And sir, that meeting will be on November 21st?
I will not be here. I will go Puerto Rico on the Wednesday.
Well, that's when council will be taking it up, is on the 21st.
Do I have to be here or?
You or a representative who can speak on your behalf has to be here.
It's here, right?
It will be in the back, in the conference room at 3:30 on the 21st.
21st, okay.
And the things that we will need to be able to stop the process will be demonstration that all permits have been pulled, that you have financing to be able to complete the work that needs to be done, and that you've come up with a timeframe that will work with code compliance. And you should be talking to Walter. code compliance. And you should be talking to Walter Allen over in the code compliance office.
Okay.
Okay?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. So we are to public comment on legislative matters, and as I said, that's items five. We'll make sure, sure council staff reaches out to you. Okay. So public comment on legislative matters is items five through 19. Item five is a public hearing on Act 42023, the sale of parking lot number one.
Councilmember Spitzley.
Thank you, Madam President. What we have before us is a sale of city property, parking lot number one at 425 South Grand Avenue. We had a representative from Boji here, Mr. Hindu, who's the president. We also had discussion from the parking office. It's a sale price of $760,000. It was appraised, excuse me, it was appraised for $760,000 and it's the purchase price. They are purchasing it and partnering with the Lansing Housing Commission on the building to, on the property to build workforce housing.
Right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we have a written communication from the Lansing Regional Chamber of Commerce regarding the Principal Shopping District 2023 Special Assessment Rule. And our first speaker tonight is Charles Abraham, followed by Loretta Stanaway.
Hi, my name is Chuck Abraham. I appreciate you having me. I'm not opposed to increases, but I was looking for proportionate increases for across the board. I mean, these, some of these were discretionary allocations. I know that most of it is close to 5%, but there's various parcels. The increases are 45%, 55%, 73%, 19%. A lot of those are more vacant properties. Some of them are, some's industrial and that. But I know the increase needs to be done, so I'm not opposed to an increase. I'm just looking to be something that's fair across the board, equitable for, you know, all parties. And in the future, my recommendation probably seem like would be fair to do it based on assessed values. Then it would be equal across the board. And also, from what I'm looking at, the Zone A, B, and C should possibly, my opinion would be, it should be expanded, because West, or Capitol kind of ends, I believe, on the west side of Capitol. And it seems like there's a benefit, you know, further over in that direction. And with the growth of the Lansing Inc., you know, which they are doing a great job, I mean, there's a lot of promoting going downtown. But that possibly the expansion of this whole Lansing Inc. should be expanded. That's my comment.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Loretta Stanaway, and then Jody Washington.
I'm just going to talk about the parking lot issue. It seems to me like the city has gone so far, so many times, into the dark of buying properties at high prices, selling them without appraisals or appropriate appraisals, and selling them at low prices. Our taxpayers cannot continue to fund these giveaways to these developers who make profits right and left off of these ventures. Second question is, if they're going to build all these different things, that they're talking about building in this area, where are they going to park? And Mr. Boji made, or his president made the comment that real estate usually sells at appraisal value. I can tell you that for many years now, and continuing into right now, in particular in housing, and I assume also in commercial, houses are going for way over appraised value right and left. People put in multiple offers and get turned out multiple times because they get beat out within a day or two by somebody doubling or tripling their margin over the asking price. So that argument is not going to hold water, as far as I'm concerned. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Jody Washington, and then Luna Brown.
Thank you, Jody Washington, Lansing. There are so many things that happened in this meeting tonight that are just troubling at best, and this parking lot issue is one of them. First of all, here we go again, another developer just slapping something in somewhere because he heard somewhere that it was needed. With the partner, he has no idea what that partner does. I've been in hundreds of the Lansing Housing Commission units, and they are disgusting and deplorable. And they should be behind bars for having people live in those conditions. But yet, we have a multimillionaire developer here that wants to slap up more low-income housing with the Lansing Housing Commission, because trust me, there is money to be made in poverty. And these developers know it, and they're going to come at us time and time and time again. They get the li-tac credits. He didn't even know what it was. I know what they are. They get federal tax credits, state tax credits. They ask for a brownfield. They'll ask for a pilot, and then they make money hand over fist on the rents that are being brought in. And Andy, here we go again, another affordable housing unit. I love affordable housing, don't get me wrong. But Lansing cannot sustain all of the affordable housing in the region. We just had East Lansing vote no to affordable housing in their city, but Lansing just keeps letting these millionaire developers make gobs of money off our taxpayers. It needs to be a regional discussion. There's got to be some vision, guys, and we have to have a plan. This knee-jerk reaction and just putting crap anywhere, and I don't mean affordable housing is crap, because it's not, but we have no plan, no vision. Somebody's got an idea, let's undersell the parking lot. I'm sorry, Boji is going to make some of that $40 million, because aren't they the ones that are going to renovate the Masonic Temple for City Hall? Come on. This guy, he didn't even, I'm so troubled by all of this, and I'm so troubled by the lack of vision of this city, that, and the governing body that has a chance to make a difference never does. Sounds good to me. I heard one council member say, well, I thought they'd have a good place to live. So what if there's 200 homeless people peeing in the property? I mean, come on, guys. Can we have some vision here? Can we have some critical thinking? And you know what? I already lost an endorsement in an election because I came up here and criticized what some people were doing. So I have nothing to lose. And this, you will constantly hear from me, regardless of the repercussions, because I will stand up for this city, even if I stand alone.
Thank you.
Thank you. And our last speaker for this portion is Luna Brown.
Hi. First, I'd like to address number 19 on here, the addition of Rule 48 for virtual participation. This is absolutely necessary. Any public meeting should be, should have some sort of hybrid option. It's essential for accessibility for people with disabilities, first and foremost, but it also gives access to people who are sick, possibly in the hospital, maybe who are on a business trip and can't attend in person. It does nothing but increase accessibility to these meetings, and I think it's an obvious, like, thing to pass. Second, I'm going to also speak on number five, which is the parking lot issue. I found it absolutely disgusting that this corporate suit's coming here to buy up another parking lot cheap to build another low-income housing unit, and he's never even stepped foot inside a low-income housing unit, which he admitted himself. Like, we need to stop catering these corporate, like, bigwigs just because they have money. Like, we're not even helping the poor people we have in our community right now, which I am one of, in realistic ways. We keep building affordable housing, which isn't even affordable to a lot of these people, and now we want to build more, which will probably also not actually be affordable for us. I mean, they put in some in Allen Neighborhood Center, which costs over $800 a month, and I can find non-low-income housing cheaper than that, you know? And they're calling it low income and getting tax credits for it, like, just because the rent in the area gets slightly more than that normally. Like, we need realistic options, and we need better shelters, better options for the homeless in the city before we're even concerned about some rich developer making more profits.
Thank you.
Thank you. And we are to the referral of the public hearing, Act 42023.
That will go back to Development and Planning Committee.
All right, then we are to the consent agenda.
Vice President Garza.
Thank you, Council President. So what we have remaining on the council agenda is the polling place changes, precinct nine, 36, and 38. We have a grant acceptance automobile theft prevention authority grant. We have a grant acceptance Office of Highway Safety Planning. That's OUI grant for impaired driving, speed, and seat belt enforcement. We have grant acceptance for burn memorial justice assistance grants. That's JAG grant for the Lansing Police Department. We have a grant amendment Victims of Crime Act, VOCA. That's Capital Area Response Effort Care Grant. We have a grant acceptance for the multi-agency 2023 Burn Justice Assistant Grant. Time up. Last one, last one, though. Grant acceptance, Office of Highway Safety Planning Grant for bicycle and pedestrian safety. And that's all.
All right. We have a motion for these items. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Passes unanimously. Thank you.
Okay, resolutions for action, brownfield plan number 84.
Councilmember Spitzley.
Thank you, Madam President. What we have before us is a request for a brownfield plan number 84 at 505, 507 East Shihawasi Street Rehabilitation Project. This is, this project is to redevelop two buildings that are right there on Cedar Street across from Lansing Brewery Company. One of them, one of the tenants will be a woodworking facility or a small business that does woodworking. The other one would be a small business for unique flowers. The brownfield is necessary because one of the buildings, for prior use, there is some vapor intrusion issues. One of the buildings, I think it's 505, already has a vapor intrusion set up, and 507 needs vapor intrusion set up. That is to keep vapors and fumes from coming up from the ground into, through the foundation into the building. And so a brownfield plan was requested to address some of those costs. I just want to make sure I'm complete before I finish talking here. Here it is. I think I'm, I think I'm good. Yep, it's a woodworking school and retail shop. The proposed total capture taxes as a result of the brownfield plan is approximately $234,000. 505 East Shihawasi is considered eligible for the brownfield program since it is adjacent and contiguous to a facility. The facility is 507 East Shihawasi Street, which has a vapor intrusion in there due to soil contamination. 505 will also need to have that vapor intrusion, I mean, that, yeah, the vapor intrusion facility as well. An estimated $93,000 of the proposed capture will be City of Lansing taxes. With that, I would move the resolution.
All right. We have a motion on the resolution. Are there any questions? Councilmember Spatafor.
I just had one question. Could you clarify, the Gillespie Group is asking for a tax abatement of, is it $234,000?
Yeah, $234,000.
Just wanted to clarify. Thank you.
It's a 19-year brownfield.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any other questions? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Passes unanimously.
Okay, we're to the Principal Shopping District assessment.
Councilmember Spatafor.
First off, Madam President, I'd move the role as presented, and then open for discussion. So the role before us represents a change from what was heard at the public hearing. A question that was asked by members of this body was whether the changes were substantive enough to warrant a second public hearing. And the answer is no, because the changes were responsive to what was received at the public hearing. So we're good on the public hearing side of things. You recall back, we heard several resident, I'm sorry, business owners come and speak about the unexpected hike in assessments for surface-level parking lots, treating them as the same as first-floor retail. This revised role reverses that and raises it by 5%. You will see some changes in assessments that were referenced in public comment that are more than 5%. Those 5%, those greater than 5% changes reflect the previous role's adjustments, bringing everyone to a more equal assessment. There were some exemptions that were warranted, that were put in place for different zones and different types of property. So while they may seem like large increases, they are removing exemptions that had been in place in zones where there wasn't a lot of activity and work done by DLI. And now, with the expansion of their scope and offerings, that was put in place. There is a letter here that you received, I'll bring it to your attention, because I told a couple that I would, from the Chamber of Commerce that is a little surprising in its lack of context and understanding of the issue, claiming that this is a unexpected proposal, that the assessment is surprising and new. It's not new. This is something that is done every year. The assessment increase is something that is new in the last six years. But Councilmember Wood reminds me that this is not unprecedented to raise the rates. We've just held them solid. And I will want to point out, too, there was a statement that was made that we're elated to have received these funding for these projects. They combine a truly game-changing activity for the Lansing area. In recognition of the critical importance that a thriving downtown in our capital city means to the region and the state, our local coalition developed this proposal, which includes funding requests from the State of Michigan for projects and services that will revitalize Lansing's central city. That's from the Lansing Regional Chamber of Commerce when this money was awarded to the city. The grant money they reference in the, in the letter is broken down as follows. $1.3 million is going directly to small business grants to support our businesses in the downtown Lansing area. $2.5 million will be rolled out in a building repair and maintenance program, and $290,000 will go to a community space improvement plan. DLI has spoken with me. They do plan to hire one person with the grant money referenced in the letter. That person's job is to monitor the compliance with state law regarding the grant. So the grant is separate from the operating budget of DLI. The role will continue to support DLI's activities. It does include in the resolution a 3% escalator in subsequent years. Working with the Treasury Department, I'm sorry, City Assessor, we determined that a 3% increase was more in line with historical inflation than was 5%. So I, again, reiterate, I move the role.
All right, we have a motion before us. Are there any discussions? Councilmember Spitzley.
Thank you, Madam President. First, for full disclosure, I do, as a city council, I do sit on the Board of Downtown Lansing Inc. You know, I think that the, I do support the assessment. You know, it was done, and the whole study was done pre-COVID, and kind of put to the side and now brought back. You know, you know, should, should they, you know, I think the disappointing thing is probably it should have probably went back out for some sort of public comment. But the DLI meetings are open to the public as well, and so there are, there were opportunities. But I just wanted to say, I am going to support this. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there other comments? Seeing none, I guess my only concern, Councilmember Spatafor, I see that we would have automatic rate increases, and I think one of the things I mentioned to you was the fact that, and I don't see it in the resolution, maybe there was conversation in the committee meeting about having discussion with the public and that by September 1st, so that people felt more confident and had a better idea of how those dollars were being utilized.
There wasn't a date-specific conversation, Madam President, but we had several members of the taxed jurisdiction, or the assessed jurisdiction, don't worry, it's a tax, that were in the, in the room, and we had the conversation with Ms. Edgely, Ms. Edgely from DLI about getting those folks more involved. Because there was a disconnect, I think, about understanding some of the services that that assessment brought to those business owners, and some of the things that were available to them as part of a member of the assessed. of the assessed district. So I think that you'll see a more open line of communication, and that didn't make it into the resolution, but we could certainly do that or not, but there was, there's, there's a ver- fervent understanding from interested parties that there will be more involvement next time.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Are there other, any other questions? Seeing none, or Councilmember Brown?
Uh, I guess just, you know, I've heard several concerns and, you know, talking with a lot of the business owners, I just, it seems like we're trying to rebound from COVID, so, um, adding more tax just seems like more of a burden at this point versus, you know, giving a little bit more time to rebound would be my, my thought.
Yeah, I, I did, I mean, one of the points that I researched was a number of the protesting parties received several grants from the city, uh, from state and federal resources during COVID, and used those during COVID, a lot of the DLI activities were suspended or we held harmless the operation, so this is not out of bounds, we're not moving, we're not doing drastic increases as a five percent, uh, the last increase was in twenty seventeen, the cap on there is moving from ten thousand dollars to seventeen thousand dollars, but there's one affected party, um, on that, and they didn't protest. So I think there's, there is some, some legitimate concerns, and we work to try and address those in the revised role.
Yeah, I don't know who received grants or not, but just, you know, talk to the small business owners, that's their concern. I mean, I don't know who you're talking about exactly, but thank you.
Councilmember Cost.
So, uh, now, I believe I'm correct in, um, when we had Mr. Prouse here last time, and he had talked about, um, for example, his employee parking lot, and that was going to be challenging for him financially, this, this addressed that, the changes did.
Yeah, I think, if I recall, Sharon in the room, I think we real, we looked at the Prouse assessment as an example, and that the original proposal was a six hundred dollar increase annually, and the new one is a forty dollar increase, and, and I think Mr. Prouse indicated understanding the need for an increase but was asking for something less, and that was a similar situation with all the single parcel parking lots around the city.
And that's, that's what I recalled, just wanted to make sure that, that was accurate, thank you.
Sharon's nodding her head at me, so I, I didn't just make those numbers up, that is the truth, so we're good.
All right. So, no other comments? With that, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, passes unanimously.
Nay.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't hear, didn't hear you, Councilmember Brown.
Okay, we are to, uh, orders to make, make safer demolish for seventeen twenty-two Denora, followed by one thirty-one Jackson.
Uh, Councilmember Hussein.
Yeah, sure, so these are, uh, on here for the same reason, we actually took these, uh, through our process earlier in the year, uh, these made their way to, um, purchasing for the, uh, for the bid process, uh, and at that point, they found that, um, basically there were sign-offs with inaccurate legal descriptions. Uh, so in any event, we have to take this, or have, have had to take this back through the process, um, with, uh, you know, show cause hearings and an opportunity for public input and the like. Um, we have, uh, with regard to these two properties, uh, we have, um, engaged co-compliance, uh, these still meet the statutory, uh, thresholds, essentially for make-safere demolishes, uh, both are sixty-day, uh, so I will move them respectively, um, and with that, uh, the first is for seventeen twenty-two Denora Street, so I'd, I'd move that make-safere demolish resolution.
Have the resolution before us for seventeen twenty-two, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, passes unanimously. Councilmember Hussein.
And then, again, a symptom of the same issue, um, this resolution is for, in order to make safer demolish, uh, this would be a sixty-day to the owners of one thirty-one Jackson Street.
All right, we have the motion before us, are there any questions? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, passes unanimously, thank you.
Okay, we are to the council rules edition of Rule forty-eight for virtual participation.
And this goes to Councilmember Spatafor, but as, uh, council is aware, and if the public isn't, that when there are rule change, it has to sit for at least one council meeting, and this one, I think, is sitting for two.
So my question is, do I have to make a motion and it sits?
Yes.
Okay, first, I would like to make a motion to pass the resolution adding Rule forty-eight to the council rules, and then I would like to do nothing with it but explain it. Um, so as you recall, during the last budget cycle, it was important to a number of council members led, I think by Councilmember Jackson, to open up our meetings to include virtual participation. I know that President Hussein and Vice President Wood at the time worked to get our committee meetings broadcast virtually, and we're ready to take the next great leap into the twenty-first century with two-way participation in our meetings. The rules that are drawn up here set out some boundaries and parameters under which the public is able to sign up for participation. For the committee of the whole and the city council meetings, the regularly scheduled meetings, um, we will develop a process through the city clerk's office to have a sign-up sheet, and the sign-up will close four hours before the beginning of that meeting. Um, we wanted to start there, um, to see how it worked, to make sure everyone got the information in time, to make sure our staff could work on it, we were looking at different formulas, but, um, Mondays are a very busy time around here, and we had looked at the schedule, and our city staff managing committee of the whole were in committees, um, almost right up to committee of the whole, so we wanted to make sure that the resources to participate were given out in time. They are for legislative matters, um, and for city council committees other than committee of the whole, they will work more like town hall open forums, so the link will be published with the agenda, and folks can, um, sign in, uh, and participate virtually as part of regular public comment for the committee meetings. So there's two, two different processes, one for the, all the regular, uh, standing committees is sort of a free-for-all like it was during the COVID pandemic when we did virtual city council meetings, and then the COW and city council meetings will require a sign-up. And another reason that is, is we want to make sure the, the broadcast is seamless, we've been working with City TV to make sure we're using the right technology and that they have the right tools available to control participation, but also ensure that inappropriate, um, access to the meetings does not take place, uh, offensive, we all recall back to twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one, uh, some, some Zoom bombing that took place, particularly during our committee meetings, so we're making sure that happened. We've hired, um, we have, the city has hired a person that I've been working with to make sure we're, um, they, they are able to be in the room when we're doing these meetings and broadcasting them over Teams, um, and there is a piece on here that some have noted, the presiding officer reserves the right to mute and end the comment of anyone who violates these rules, and that the chair may reduce the amount of time allowed for each speaker if he or she has determined that the number of registered speaker is so enormous that the meeting cannot be timely concluded without a reduction in the time allocated for each speaker. That's not new language, that's, that language exists in city council rules, it's just being reiterated as part of expanding our public participation. So, um, again, there is a motion, but it has to sit for another meeting, but we will have it sit through the twenty-seven.
Okay, Councilmember Jackson.
Thank you, um, there is a problem with this, is that, and Lisa, and the city attorney, follow me on this, is that if you make a public comment in a public forum, which is what city council is, you pretty much should not have restrictions unless there is a very, very compelling strict scrutiny reason to restrict, um, the ability to make public comment. So if you have a four-hour window that you have to sign up beforehand, you're basically restricting all those people who can't or don't sign up four hours beforehand, there's a lot of people who come to council, they don't even know what they're necessarily going to say until they hear people talking. So I think that if we have the four-hour thing, there has to be a very, very justifiable reason to restrict it, and I don't think that, um, avoiding inappropriate access, when we have a person who's able to mute, like you just said, and control the content, and just as a starting point to see, like, where we are, is a good enough reason to have the four hours. I do think reducing the time is a strong enough reason when you say to get through a whole meeting, but as far as having four-hour restriction prior period, I don't think I can support that.
Okay, well, um, we did work with the clerk's off- Oh, yeah, sorry.
Go ahead. Go ahead.
She can restrict me. Um, we worked with the clerk's office, our staff, and the law department to craft these, there are some cities that limit public comment to just forty-five minutes for virtual, there are some cities that have a twenty-four hour restriction, there are some that have longer than that, we thought that four hours was the absolute bare minimum we could get by on this initial run to see how our staff could accommodate getting the information out to the public and making sure we had an accurate sign-up list. Sitting at the back of that room are two sign-up sheets that limit when people can sign up for public comment for these meetings, this is just an extension of that that operationalizes the logistics of trying to get, uh, sign-in links and accurate list of speakers to the chair of the meeting so that they can run an efficient meeting.
Councilmember Jackson.
Thank you. So, I'm trying to, is this Zoom, a Polycom, what?
It will be Teams.
Teams?
We worked, I'm sorry.
And, um, is there, there should be a way where people who's on there can, like, raise your hand like you do in Zoom, and then could be seen?
Councilmember Spatafor.
Yes, um, thank you, Councilmember Jackson, we, we, we also had that challenge during the pandemic, and one of the issues that was presented was, um, raising hands, lowering hands, raising hands, lowering hands, it really, the speaking order was challenging for folks to keep track of, it was hard to make sure that everyone who wanted to speak got to speak. The sign-up sheet ensures, the sign-up rule, rather, ensures that if you wish to register to speak, we know about it and we call on you. If you're not there, you've missed your window, if your hand's not up, we still call on you. Um, the reality is, I, I did fifty-two of these meetings as president of city council, and running that part of the meeting and trying to ensure that everyone who wants to speak is very important, it's also very logistically challenging because Zoom and Teams and others have not yet created the technology to make that work in the best way possible for inclusion. I actually sit on a panel with Zoom's Government Relations Group, working on how to make this better, this is the technology we have right now.
Councilmember Jackson.
Well, thank you, that's interesting, because again, the courts, even in this building, makes that happen very easily, um, but that's the reason why I can't support it, because I don't think that we need to do four hours, like East Lansing apparently has no wait time, it's just whoever wants to speak, because if the point is to not have people sign up, then we should have four hours or some greater time, but if the point is to include people, then we shouldn't have a time, and we should try to work it out, even through the flaws, because then we have to amend the rule and appeal that, to even change it, just to see how the test run goes.
Councilmember Spatafor.
I guess, Councilmember Jackson, okay. I just also want to point out, too, this doesn't limit anyone's ability to drive down here after the four hours, so if it's, if they do miss that window and they're able to be down here, they can still provide public comment, and everything that's on the agenda has multiple times it's in front of us. So that, I think, we're trying to balance the need to maintain a system that works, but also include as many people as possible, so I, we talked about this in committee, Councilmember Cost was very, um, insistent that we revisit these rules after some time in next year, next, next legislative session for us, to make, to see how they're working, and I'm committed to that, too. I wanted to make sure that to Sherry and to Clerk Swolp's offices, we had a reasonable bar for them to work with and then come back and change it. I'm not saying four hours is the end-all, be-all forever, but right now, this is what I think, after weeks of talking about it, months of thinking about it and working with all the players, provides us a path forward to, to try this out at Lansing City Hall. I will be supporting this, if that, if that wasn't obvious, just.
Thank you, thank you, and again, this will be up for a vote on December eleventh.
Okay.
Later.
Um, we are to the late item, uh, the sole source purchase, um-
Determination.
Yeah, determination on the sole source purchase.
Um, I'm, uh, relinquish the gavel.
All right, so with that, we got a vote here, you guys, so all those in favor, oh, no.
I gotta move it.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's, that's fine, not a problem. Um, I would move the, uh, determination of the sole source, um, resolution that was, uh, dealt with in committee of whole.
All right, thank you. Um, so we got a proper motion in place, all those in favor, please state by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign? Okay, motion passed at six-two.
Okay, we are to speaker registration for public comment on city government-related matters, that's the yellow sheet in the back, if you haven't signed in, we'll give you about another, um, thirty seconds, and in the meantime, we're to reporters of officers, boards, and commission, I'm sorry. Yeah, we're to officers.
Yeah, we got a question.
Yeah. Yes.
Vice President Garza.
Thank you, Council President, I move that all items be considered as being read in full and proper referrals be made by the president.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, passes unanimously.
We have minutes of boards and commissions.
Placed on file.
From the mayor, a sole source purchase for IT department for Du Point as the vendor for managed services.
Committee of whole and internal auditor.
Point of order, Madam President.
Yes, ma'am.
I, 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 I still am, and I think my question answered, if, if there, we, we're not allowed to do an up or down, how do these sole sources, why are we, why are they coming before us? And why are we, why are we acting on them? So what if we get to this one, we decide that it's not, I, and I, I don't mean to be contentious, I'm trying to figure out the process, so what if we come to this one, we decide in our wisdom, based on the, the presentation, that we don't think it meets the criteria of sole source? That doesn't mean it's not approved, what does it mean? It means nothing, it means nothing, that's my point. So I'm, I'm, I'm just trying to figure out, I'm just, I'm just trying to figure it out, I mean, it just seems to be an unnecessary layer of government if we're doing this and it means nothing.
I, I hear you, Councilmember Spitzley, thank you. That's okay. Twenty-two.
Sole source purchase, HRCS Department for Michigan Fair Contracting Centers, a vendor for prevailing wage and peril certification services.
Ways and Means and Internal Auditor.
Noise special permit, Leavitt and Stark, uh, for the CSO fifteen south project.
Uh, City Operations.
Uh, grant acceptance, environment, Great Lakes and Energy Sewer Overflow and Stormwater Reuse Municipal Grant.
Ways and Means and Internal Auditor.
And grant accepted service, services, uh, training officers, prosecutors, stop violence against women grant.
And that's Ways and Means and Internal Auditor.
And we are to remarks by council members.
Councilmembers, Councilmember Spatafor.
I don't think we said it, so I want to wish everybody out there happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you. Uh, Councilmember Jackson.
Yes, thank you, I see, uh, Willie out here, and I recognize that I have been missing you and forgetting about you, so I know you're going to talk about code, and I'm going to meet with you afterward, too, but I still would like to hear what you got to say again.
Are there other council member comments? Seeing none?
Remarks by the mayor?
Mayor, sure. None. Okay.
Okay, we are to public comment, our first speaker is Cheryl Garza, followed by Luna Brown, each speaker will have up to three minutes. Uh, Ms. Garza did submit some written materials that I've scanned to Sherry for her to distribute to council members.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Council President, Mr. Mayor, city council members and staff, I'm Cheryl Garza, I am one of three count, co-founders of Michigan COVID Memorial. We established the memorial in twenty twenty-one after the loss of my husband Freddie Garza, November eighth, twenty twenty. Freddie was the son of Laura Campfield and the brother to George Garza. Together with the Lansing Mall, the three of us have established a temporary memorial site inside the Lansing Mall. We are approaching the city council today to help us find land space at Rotary Park, River Walk, to establish a permanent memorial to honor the lives of thirty-seven thousand four hundred and sixty-two plus lives lost to COVID in the state of Michigan alone. These numbers are still currently rising. No funds are being requested of the council, we have raised funds for the steel, a team to build the memorial and create blueprints which we have submitted. We are looking for a beautiful spot here in Lansing to create and erect a six-by-seven foot permanent memorial to remember all of the thirty-seven thousand four hundred and sixty-two lives lost to COVID here in the state of Michigan. We are hoping you will continue and consider working with us and have further conversations regarding a permanent memorial here in our city. Thank you.
Thank you very much, I'm sorry for your loss.
Thank you.
Thank you, next we have Luna Brown, followed by Nicholas Zandi.
I couldn't have predicted that I'd be so disappointed by an article mentioning Lansing building a warming center, uh, honestly, it's like the worst thing I've read all week. First off, it's only going to be open to families, which, like, the majority of people on the streets right now aren't in families on the streets. You go to homeless encampments, you don't see families, you know, like, I don't know where these families are even, like, I haven't seen them, and I see homeless people on the streets almost daily. And I see homeless people on the streets almost daily. Second, during Code Blues, they are going to allow certain other people to come into it. But it's specified in the article that it will only be elderly and disabled. First off, who's deciding who's disabled in these cases? I just wanted to know that. Next, the city gave a contract to yet another faith-based organization with a history of discrimination. I've spoken to my allies in Detroit. I've spoken to the director of Transgender Michigan, which is based out of Detroit, and I have not heard any good things about them so far. They don't seem to have any policies openly discriminating, unlike our mission here in Lansing. But then again, their policies aren't even publicly available. You can't find them anywhere on their website. It just seems weird that we're going this route yet again when we've mentioned repeatedly that this is a problem already in Lansing. And with the sort of money that we're working with to do this, you'd think the city could have actually, you know, like hired like contractors out of Lansing or even staffed it themselves by hiring new staff. But they didn't go with that option. They just picked another faith-based organization. I don't know. It was extremely disappointing. And again, even during Code Blues, you're not going to be open to everyone. So where, where does everyone else go during the Code Blue? And are they just dying on the streets? I don't know. Like, literally like the most disappointing thing I've read all week. You know, I saw the title to the article and I got excited for a brief moment. And I don't know, I was just so disappointed. And we're going to be talking about this at the coalition meeting this week. I can guarantee you that. Yeah, do better, Lansing. And again, find it completely disgusting that the council's not even allowed to have a say on this. Like, this was an administrative decision with no dialogue between the council or the people of the city who you're supposed to be serving.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Nicholas Zandi and then Willie Hobbs.
Is the clock starting?
Go ahead.
So what I'm going to say, first off, I'm going to talk about, the first thing I need to say briefly, that's about what Congressperson Salib said about the Israel-Palestine thing. I believe that she was within her right to say what she had to say about it. And to people like Dana Nessel, who said that she should walk back her statement, and those who voted in favor of censuring her, I hereby hold you in contention with the First Amendment because this is clearly, because, because censuring her for something like that is clearly a violation of First Amendment. And I think that, again, well, I do think she may have worded it wrong. The fact that people are giving her crap for wording something, simply wording something wrong is just awful. I've spoken a little too long on it. So now I'm going to speak about the city charter commission, which I'll be running for, once the application's made ready, of course. I just want to state very clearly my opinion on this. I mean, I didn't initially intend for this to just be a full-on like charter revision. I intended for a, just a straight-up ballot proposal about the wards. However, things got in the way for me, so I had to do, settle with what we got. And I, because of that, I voted in favor of it. And I think we need to definitely change our city charter. And there are certain positions that I certainly need to be changed. Elected city attorney, elected city treasury, elected city assessor, that kind of stuff. And get rid of the at-large, increase the number of wards, you know, that kind of stuff. And so there are a lot of things that I want to see changed on the city charter. And considering just the fact that the mayor's been doing things without the consent of the council, such as the tear down of Swak and that homeless shelter thing that's apparently for families only is just accepting a Code Blue scenario, whatever those are. Like, you have, there, I don't know if we should eliminate the mayor's position entirely, but we certainly should put some limits on the power that they can't do certain things, like, I don't know, opening up homeless shelters or with, or tear down certain buildings without the city council's consent first. That's all I need to say and I shall yield the rest of my time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Willie Hobbs and then Loretta Stanaway.
Last time I was down here, how y'all doing? We were talking about Mary Earbidge. I thought about that man a long time after I left the council meeting. You know, don't look like he no different, but I'm going to see. Now, I've been working hard all my life, ever since nineteen sixty-three, and I'm still working. I had his surgery in July, stayed off a month. Started back with coming up with another hip surgery. Last of this month, November twenty-ninth, the law say so, nothing happened. I do everything I can to keep him breaking the law. Now, I would have been in that back room back there earlier today. They didn't have my paperwork. So they're going to redo that over. So what I did, the council member wasn't there. I brought them some paper here, just in case they don't get them, that I want them to look over. I seen a few of them back there in that back room. You know who was back there? You, the attorney right there. I want to show y'all something. I'm going to try to do all this right by law. And then I'm going to see if I can get the church to help me to do what's right. I want justice. What we call justice for all in that flag, not just halfway. And Mr. Jackson over there, I don't know what took you so long, but I ain't no go away less than I die. I'm not going nowhere because I don't, I've been treated bad for a long time. And I thought it was better. No, 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 no. It ain't no better. See like you brought up. It ain't equal, either. Y'all have a good night.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Loretta Stanaway and then Jody Washington.
First off, I want to thank Jeremy Garza and the plumbers and pipe fitters for their long efforts on getting that replication of the arch for North Cemetery underway, completed and almost ready to go up. It's been a very long labor of love and we appreciate their efforts and their expenditures on that. Second, this shelter, I cannot let this go without saying more. An RFP can be written to achieve any result that you want it to achieve. The RFP for this program said it was a warming shelter. It was published on the eighth of October with a deadline for application on the sixteenth of October with a five-day window of business days in which to submit an RFP on a complicated, involved project. So you tell me that somebody didn't have a heads-up on that and didn't have warning time in advance to prepare something before the actual printed proposal went out. Second, fire suppression, if it's a warming center, we don't need fire suppression. We don't need that expenditure. We haven't heard where the money for that would come from, consist, confirmed expenditures, where it would come from. We haven't heard about who would cover and how would be provided transportation because the article in the paper did say that for those seniors, disabled families that would use the shelter that weren't near the flats and that needed to have transportation, it would be provided. Nobody said how it would be provided, how that cost would be wrapped into the proposal or additional expense to the city. Nothing was addressed regarding that. And lastly, I'm not clear on this, so I could be wrong, but isn't there something in the city charter that requires the contracts over a certain amount of money to be signed off on by the council? Maybe not, but if it isn't the case, it ought to be. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And finally, tonight, Jody Washington.
Save the best for last. Peter, first, thank you. You actually provided some clarity on a couple of issues and I appreciate your concise, clear explanation on the assessments and the virtual participation. I really do. And Pat and girl, I'm going to miss you. You, you offer a lot. But having said that, this warming center is incredibly concerning. I am tired of, and I know who's throwing out the four hundred children that are unhoused. We do not have four hundred children living on the streets. Let's get that straight right now. Most of them are living with grandma or an auntie or somebody's sister, but maybe they want their own place. Or maybe the auntie or the grandma has gotten tired of them being there. These are not people living on the streets. And it's concerning to me that we are opening a five-month shelter. This is not a warming center. When you're open from seven to seven every single day, you are a shelter. The deal, the deal was Blue Code Days and, and I don't know what the one is for hot. We don't have that. And for it to only be for women with children or men with children is unconscionable. We are leaving out our elderly, which we have plenty of on the streets. We are leaving out our disabled. You only have to drive down Large Street to see our homeless people in wheelchairs. But they only get to show up if it's a Code Blue. This is a shelter. It should be open to everybody, not just people with children who, by the way, are not living on the streets. Let's just put that out there. Secondly, just quickly, I want to address the charter. The people have voted to have the charter open. This will be the absolute most important thing that is done in this city for over a decade. The commission will be more important than any seat you all are occupying, including the mayor's. We have the Lansing Chamber of Commerce already biting at the chomp, chomping at the bit to get their people on that commission. I am tired of Lansing Chamber running our city. I am tired of the special interest groups buying our political seats. I am tired of it. These people do not live in our city. And they are chomping at the bit to make sure that that charter will benefit them who don't even live here so they can make a profit. This needs to be for our people, by our people. And when you talk about needing time for fundraising, that's a problem. These groups have spent tens of thousands of dollars to get some of you elected. And that's unconscionable. It is time we have something that works in this city for us, the people, not for the business owners, sorry, not for the union workers, not for the realtors, but for the people of this city.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That was our final speaker.
And with that, we are adjourned.